Charlie, then was it? And Charlie, could we have a last name, please?
Yeah, sure. It's Charles Sullivan.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting to order at six thirty P M on Tuesday, September sixteen, twenty twenty five. Uh, public comments. Dan.
Dover Historical Society on Saturday at three P M in the afternoon at the town hall will have Bob Edwards featured to speak on the history of Dover. All the welcome refreshments will be provided. Please attend.
What was that date again?
Saturday.
The Saturday?
Yeah.
Great.
Great.
Other public comments?
Patrick.
Tomorrow evening, uh, in Wilmington, there will be a meeting at six P M uh, at the Old School Communities Center, that's the name of it, uh, where we will be getting, uh, an initial report of the kind of preliminary work done by a study team, including, uh, A I A, uh, Windham Regional Corporation and, uh, some graduate students uh, in, in the plant from the planning studio at U Mass Amherst. Um, on, this is the beginning of a project focused on coming up with some ideas with respect to flood mitigation, both in Dover and the city of thousand community.
Thank you. There are other comments?
I think our new signs look great.
That's what I was gonna say.
Oh, who knows?
I was gonna say thank you to the road crew for putting up the flagpoles and finishing the sign part, so. Did everybody notice?
They're shut off.
Very nice. A big upgrade, yes. Anything else before we move into? Okay. Uh, additions and deletions to the agenda? Uh. Jeanette is gonna provide an update on another wrinkle with the, uh, well. Uh, so, uh, Jeanette will be doing that. I don't think we're gonna be doing the other part of it, but we'll get an update of what's going on. Okay. Hearing nothing, then, uh, new business. Discuss resident concern regarding bridge construction on private land. Now, um, Marshall and Stephanie wrote a letter, well-written letter. Thank you for, uh, enlightening us. Um, so you were unaware that this work was gonna, was being done, from what I understand?
Total surprise.
Okay, and you are the property owners?
Yeah.
Um. Mike? Please, please speak to us.
So, so first of all, it's the first time I'm meeting Stephanie. So, I'm my bar with the vice president of the stump jumpers. Uh, what we eat this story, I, I just wanna thank you for all the years that we have had a good relationship. Snowmobile and Green Department. I mean, I, I, I can thank many people in this room because it takes a lot of people for this process to happen and, and every landowner is, is as important as this. And also, extremely sorry and upset about, about any, uh, any worries that you had or, or any distress that you had with the situation. With that being said, I'm sure you know if there was an existing bridge here for longer than I know. We've come in there and you decked that bridge twice in the past seven years and sort of in the year to time and, and eight years. Plus, the fact that the underlying telephone poles were cracked. So, you put the bridge was gonna be shut down, you know, let, let, it needs to, it needs to come out. The fact that we didn't tell you that we're gonna replace the bridge is that cannot be, uh, can, cannot be, uh, apologized. But I mean, that, that is the only intent we had was to keep the trail safe going forward. Uh. You know that that is in bridge that gets everybody to go something more work. So, and we need that to keep that bridge open. It, it, it's, it's, it's obviously small, this is more land. We need it to happen, uh, to try to find a way, probably impossible. And just know that the only reason we came there was for the safety of everyone who's done. Uh, we, we almost keep to the snowmobiles, but that bridge is, is, is an important rail that, that is used by more than just the people.
So when did the construction begin, Mike?
So, so because of the way the new bridge was being constructed, we had to bring in a bigger than normal machine. So that bigger than normal machine, I think, came in last Friday, so this month is my, this, I, we need to go Friday. And we tried to get all the work done in a day or two, and the work is obviously not done. Completely stopped work, so, uh, uh, as nice as it looks, it will blend in with the, uh, with, with the surroundings.
Is there something, uh, an issue with the stream and the abutments on the, on the bridge?
So, so we brought in this new guy. And what we did, did not disturb the, the stream nuts. What we did is we put, so, so you had, you had telephone poles that were ordering both sides of the string. We put in modular blocks that are further into the string without uh, disturbing the inhabitants.
And the string guy said this was fine?
Oh, the string guy. The, the, the bridge construction.
Richard? Thank you, Ricky. Um, so I am secretary for E V S J. Uh, and the vast organization of three years ago came up with a totally new engineer-approved plan for any bridge to be replaced. Well, Mike calls the mafia block is actually a concrete block about six foot long, every foot deep and about three and a half foot tall. None of the abutments or supports are supposed to be dug further into the bank. Make the opening a little bit wider for where the water comes through to compensate for the thickness of the block. They have a supporting weight and we are no longer using, they struck us, no longer using telephone poles. Yeah, they have specific size and length. I believe they're thirty feet, Mike. Steel beams constructed, so everything we do is by vast regulation. Um, we don't do anything on the top or go buy some stuff. These beams are about thirty-five hundred dollars a piece and they have more than enough support capacity for the gomers to pass over and they'll outlast us. They'll definitely outlast me. Um, so it looks like some massive construction is going on, some, putting in a building or something. And we should have, are you, Seth?
Yeah.
Richard, hi. We should have um, gone to Stephanie, tracked her down, knocked on her door, flown in a helicopter, whatever, and had this conversation before. Um, and I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody in the club, but we've actually started writing what we call an S O P standard operating procedures or any maintenance for in the future. Because people really need to be notified. Ricky, you know, I'm, um, yeah, I own my property. So, I can relate to Stephanie. Um. I was unaware that wasn't done and, you know, I'm, have, have a disability here and I really you know, too much on what's happening, but it really should have been handled differently. Uh, no. This is a very important pathway, as Mike had mentioned. Up to the club, not just for our club, but the people from Manchester and Woodford that all down, use the bars, restaurants, gas stations, and even hotels, they were named and ride back up the next day. So, we would up to do anything possible to negotiate this and I don't wanna make their back in the meeting, you, you have something to say, uh, to make this work out.
For yours.
Okay.
You go.
Um, the permitting vis a vis the state is incomplete. That was not approved so far as of now. Box was checked off, submitted by Mr. Garber, saying that property owners upon had given permission or in lieu of that, that they would submit an easement indicating that they had the right to go onto our property. There's no such documentation. He did not sign this application, which I believe is, I'm assuming is mandatory for a construction project of this size. It even comes with engineering things. And this is a serious project. So, uh, when I met Mr. Garber for the very first time on the site, I think the first thing I said to him was put yourself in my position. You discovered this project is going on and no one has said a word. I mean, you know, to come across this, it's pretty traumatic. So, it's beyond me, given the significance of this, uh, bridge and the trail to the stump jumpers, why they wouldn't have done with, I think, the expression due diligence, all of the permitting, went through the whole process. We called the vast rail directly. She knew nothing about this. And then on a local level, I didn't know what's required in terms of, you know, procedural, I don't know, this planning commission is supposed to check things out, whatever. But apparently, none of this was done. This, this permit was submitted. I leave two days after I talked to Mr. Garber. So, you know, as a landowner, um, you, you know, I'm speechless, the way, the, the way this is proceeded. And if it's so important, why was it conducted? I mean, it doesn't make sense that you would do a project of this size. You would not get in touch with it both, landowner. And, uh, you know, proceed in that manner. So that's kinda where we're coming from.
So, what, I have a question for you guys. Um, the, when they came in to redeck over the years, did, did, did they bother to, not you know either?
Okay.
It's not good for them.
Well.
For a while.
Yeah. And.
And, one, one of them, when, um, it should, this is what pains me so much. We used to have a great relationship with vast and, you know, Leon Boyd and, you know, all sorts of people who were, you know, members of the community. Treat, you know, treated us with respect, you did it for them with respect, we were happy, they kept people on the trails. It was great. And now, this pandemonium, you know, and, uh, it's, as I understand it, there are supposed to be the signatures of both landowners from giving them permission for to of do maintenance on the trail every year. We have not seen one of those permission slips for a long time. That does not come our way and, um, you know, they, they have not gotten two signatures, which is the law or is the vast rule. And they have, um, you know, I, I question this thing that, that Mike said, that, that Josh Carvahal okayed all of this because in my conversations with him, he indicated that it was not proper. So, um, you know, I, I also question the seriousness of vast commitment to keeping a good relationship with landowners. If, if it's, you know, gone out in this way. And I also understand that they came before you to ask for money for this bridge?
We didn't fund
Right.
this point. And honestly, this makes a, puts a bad light on funding it in the future. And, and we don't back fund projects, so that creates another whole layer of problem. So, we potentially could have gotten funding from the town. That might not happen now because we don't go back and fund projects that.
After the fact.
Yeah, after the fact. That's right. And, you know, this is such a vital part and now, obviously, you guys have supported it for so long. This is really upsetting that this kind of thing happened and I, I, I I think you should apologize to the town as well, Mike. I, I really do. I, I think that there's a lot of apology that needs to go around here because it makes us really question what we're doing going forward and it could affect funding. Yes, you did.
I, I give apologies to everyone that, that, uh, you know, that they have been misled in any way. Well, let me speak to some of the names that we're, we're talking about. When it comes to the application, because your signature is not on there, Josh has said that the bridge needs to be removed. The bridge being removed with Josh's approval or, or not approval, but the bridge is fine the way it is. That's why everything what was submitted, yeah, it was, we didn't know we had to submit it because we were just replacing the bridge and not, and not disturbing the stream. But he wanted the new construction. He wants to take a look at it. Uh, the, the reality is at any time, any landowner can tell us to take the hike and get rid of their bridges. You don't need Josh's permission. You don't need the town's permission. The, the reason Josh had gotten the balance is because there's an October first deadline that everything that needs to be done needs to be removed. So, so we're lucky to be there for this moment. Uh, sort of the town and, and money is concerned, when I came and discussed money, that's all we were doing at that point in time. I had not submitted anything to the town. I, I knew that when we started this bridge that we were out of, that that was not part of the, the process. There are other things that we do to this town, but I'm sorry that it's.
They kind of conflated everything together.
Just asking questions, uh, right? Nothing's been submitted. You haven't asked for anything. Um, but I, I obviously do apologize to everyone for, you know, any, anything that, that, that is upsetting.
So what come, what comes up next? I'm gonna ask. What do you guys want to see happen next? It's your land.
Yeah.
What, where do you want this to proceed? Have you thought about what you want or do you wanna think about that? And honestly, really, at this point, I mean, certainly you should come to us and talk to us, but it's not like the select board is gonna make you do anything or make you gonna be in agreement between the two of you. And I think we, we really just wanna facilitate, make sure that we have, you know, happy humans in town. So, what, what, for the two of you, what makes the most sense going forward? Russell?
Uh, you know, it's hard to convey and I guess it's, uh, perhaps everyone in this room's, is focused at one time or uh, where, you know, if you're a property owner and something goes amiss. You know, a third party might, may not quite pick up on the, um, the emotional impact. It's been a lot to absorb. I've been sick the past week. We've had to deal with calling the state. We've come in, we've talked with all the very pleasant, it looked happy. With Jeanette, we devoted a lot of time to this and quite frankly, we're kind of, you know, we've emotionally had it and to kind of have a clear plan in mind, we're objective right now. Speaking for myself is one of the, uh, co-owners. Uh, it, uh, it's still settling. Uh, I really wanna talk to a lawyer. And I mean, there's so many angles to this thing that, the more you think about it, something else pops up and it's a question that I don't feel prepared, you know, that I'm gonna have the resources to address or to answer. So, right now, speaking for myself, we're processing. And to take something very obvious, it occurred to me the other day, who owns this? I heard that it costs eighteen thousand dollars. Who owns the bridge? You know, and at that point, with girders, you know, when I saw it, it was exposed. Last time I went, first time I saw it was exposed and I saw this picture because it looked like something that would go right across Route one hundred. And I was thinking, my God, this is an expensive proposition. Anyway, it's very sophisticated. And, you know, that kind of question. Who owns this thing? And a, again, another reason why that long bridge did not cost eighteen thousand dollars. So, all of a sudden, this thing is almost like from outer space has settled and, uh, you know, you're trying to make heads tails out of it, so.
Well, to, to me, it seems like this was gone about, um, you know, in, in direct, uh, indirect flowing of several layers of law, which ticks me big time. You know, the, the vast rules for how these things should be permitted, the state law for how these things should be permitted. And then there's all this, you know, apologizing, which I appreciate, but, you know, you broke the law, you know? I mean, it's like someone steals your car and then you're, uh, you know, no good, Nick, if you don't give it to them. You know, so, uh, you know, I, I realize I'm a little bit, uh, hard-hearted right now. Um, but, yeah, I, I, I I think that, that the, the group, it would be, it set a terrible precedent that you can, uh, ignore landowners' rights, you can ignore the law, do what you want and, um, oh, well, everyone will get to make up and we'll get to roar around in the woods as usual. So, the, this, I'm, I know I sound like the, the school norm, I am, but there you go. You know, I, I don't like rewarding this kind of behavior. So maybe we think about it some more. Um, quite frankly, I've, I feel like I've done an awful lot of thinking about it over the, uh, last week and I'd like to think about something else. Um, but that's, that's my say, so.
Mike?
Just, just so we know about the bridge and what happens to bridges after landlords, uh, don't want them anymore. They're, they're given the, uh, the option to either buy the bridge for a dollar and accept responsibility to the bridge or the club needs to take it out.
Yeah, you're saying, excuse me. So you're saying the club owns the bridge?
Well, I'm saying that the landlord has the option.
Well, someone's paying you for the bridge.
Right now, yeah. Do, someone, if you're selling a bridge for a dollar, that indicates possession. So, what's the status of the bridge right this minute?
Who, who's? I think, uh, don't own the seats for the bridge. I mean, do you want the bridge? You know, I didn't, we'll have the bridge, we have to take it out. But that's.
Well, that's, that's.
Okay.
Just wanna help. Well, it's a question, but to clarify it, make sure you understand what they're asking. What I think he's asking is, is if you're going to sell him the bridge for a dollar, that means you have to own the bridge now. Otherwise, you're not giving him anything.
We're somehow stay responsible.
Okay, that's, that's what he's asking for property, right? Okay.
Well, as we did when the, when we.
But if we were to buy the bridge for a dollar, then it would be our responsibility to make sure no one broke their neck on it.
Oh, if, if you buy the bridge back for a dollar, the trail's shut down.
Okay. And the idea being that's better than making you take it out because it's cheaper, correct?
It's, I, I don't think we're talking about selling it to you for a dollar if, the, the, uh, if the trail doesn't exist.
This is what I mean. There are a lot of angles to this thing and, you know, to apply to make life a learning. New things arise, so we process them. I'd, I'd love, I'd love to hear other people. Um, you know, their ideas, et cetera. And, uh, as the poet once said, the line experience of the neighborhood. I put a lot by that. But, again, you know, I, I think with this new uh, manifestation of the bridge that this would, this would, was not a matter of just fixing up the old bridge, which, you know, was kind of like, I don't wanna knock the Boy Scouts, but it's kind of like a Boy Scout project. And all of a sudden, we have this thing that's more tap and z. You know? And I think with certain responsibilities come with that and it's like, you know, I mean, in the day the world we live in today to show up, I think there were two excavators when I went and saw the, uh, bridge for the first time, so.
Patrick?
So, to show up, or two excavators onto someone's property and they don't know excavators are coming in, in today's world, you're gonna have some problems. You, you know, I mean, I'd be terrified just to, you know? So, again, you know, the emotional impact of this thing to me is kind of extraordinary. You gotta take other people into consideration, how they're gonna view this stuff, react. And, uh, you know, it's a shock.
Patrick?
So, 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 I, I think from the town perspective, the contact we had with this project was when Mike came in and talked about, you know, getting, getting some funding to help across the, of the project. And we gave him some specific guidance that if he wanted to get that, you know, here's what you would have to do. And there was also a discussion uh, about potentially putting stump jumpers in a position where maybe they would, they would be part of a package of, of items considered a town meeting every year in terms of an appropriation. Those are two bits of guns we gave Mike. Uh, I think at that meeting, because I went back and looked at the minutes in anticipation of this meeting, Mike, you know, you had that as a takeaway and you said that at the meeting that you planned, your intention was to start construction after Labor Day, I believe, is what you said at the meeting. And there's, there was one meeting sense and I think we gave, I've put it back to you to say that if you wanted to come in and ask for money to help with funding, then we gave you guidance and we were gonna connect with Shannon as to how to do that. So that was our connection. I can a hundred percent understand how upset both of you are about this. Um, and, and, and I don't know, and I'm, I'm asking this more from the question of trying to help think, help all of us think this through as a, as a community. Um, is there a circumstance, you know, basically what I've heard from Mike and, and I think some of the other stump jumpers folks, that if there's no agreement here, step, choice one is they'll just remove the bridge, right? Mike, is that correct? Choice two is you have the option of the bridge for an anonymous price. Whether you want that or not, I mean, choice one seems like probably the one you would do if there's no deal, just take your bridge out. The other option is, is, is there a circumstance where Mike and/or some of the other members of stump jumpers could come in and do a better job of presenting something to you where you would consider what they're planning to do? Is there, is there a circumstance where you do that or you're just not interested in this at all? Would that be something you hope, hope to?
I'd be open to it next year. I, I think everybody needs to chill out.
Right.
For a bit.
Okay.
And, um, you know, I, I don't want to, uh, load the stump jumpers up like over hills. It seems to be more expensive to take the bridge out than to leave it there for a year and then visit it. Um, but, you know, I, I really wanna see a revolutionized attitude on the part of the club. Uh, you know, revolution back to where it was when, you know, there was due conditions and people sent out notices and we signed them and sent them, so.
So I think, I think you just hit on something that may be a complication or maybe it isn't. Is if they remove the bridge and they wanna come back next year, put it in, then they've incurred the cost of putting it in, in, out and putting it in again.
Yeah.
Is that fair? That, that's.
That's, I mean, that's why I keep asking is, you know, that's gonna be on top of eighteen thousand. It's not gonna be free to remove it.
Right.
You know, so it's not gonna be free to, to rebuild it. You know, so it's not gonna be free to to rebuild it. But I I'd like time to uh, get my husband to dwell with him. And talk about it with him and, you know, at home about whether we want, I, we want to, you know. How uh, how tough we want to be, but. I think that uh. We need to take a rest for a year and, you know, close the trail. Or or reroot, I don't know what the the rules are about Far Beyond or any road or or anything else where else you. You go aside from across our field down into our woods and what if it went to be one hundred? Or the side of one hundred?
Well, let's ask, let's ask the stump jumpers before, is there an alternative path if the bridge is closed?
No, not not that we've put into, I mean, that's something we either have to go north of you, it's up to Triple Tree.
Mm-hmm.
Or we come south to Upper Handle Road and then use Far Beyond to get to that.
Right. Dan. Sorry.
So I see what problem here, it's not what you do, but how you do it. We have a number of different authorities involved in this, obviously you have the state, you have VAS, you have the stump jumpers and you have the town. And there has to be some kind of procedure where everyone talks to each other, that's really the issue here. Yes. Mike has given an apology, the town has given an apology, but in the future, moving forward, it's how you do something. So. We we need a better procedure.
Richard?
Nah, Dan pretty much said it.
Communication is key with this, with this and if it's falling down and signatures aren't had on a regular basis. That is not an acceptable way to. You know, ha- run a club and that uses private land, Sarah.
So I was just gonna say, I'm. You guys, I absolutely understand where you're coming from, I I would be really upset if I found somebody. Digging on my land. I would also. For myself, hope that I would. Be able to at some point take a step back and say, okay, what's, is there a way that I can let this happen? That I will feel respected, listened to. And my land respected. Is there a process that I would accept? And then come back to the stump jumpers and say, under these conditions. And ask them to honor this, the conditions that you want in place to have this happen. And perhaps if you're feeling right now is you don't want them using that bridge for this winter, that you want that year of abeyance. Is there um? Is there a possible? If you would even consider that at some point in the future, you would allow that bridge to be used. Would there be a way to close the bridge that's there without removing it for this winter? It minimizes the amount of impact on your property. It minimizes the expense, right, of pulling it out and then potentially putting it back in. And I, hopefully, it would give the stump jumpers an opportunity to demonstrate some good faith towards you guys. By by doing that and respecting the the boundaries that you want set and I think you. You know, unfortunately, I I don't think there's anybody in the stump jumpers who isn't. Saying we made a mistake, like I don't think anybody's defending what happened, right? That doesn't make you guys feel better, but I don't think anybody's trying to, trying to rationalize that this really wasn't a big a deal. So what can they, what could they do going forward and you can't answer that question probably tonight, but is that a question you would consider thinking about? And at some point in the future going to the stump jumpers and saying, okay, under these conditions and then see where where that takes you.
Yes, yeah, definitely. Tabby.
Okay. Uh, one of my concerns is that this is a new structure, which under. Pretty much all conditions would require a zoning permit as well, resurfacing. The deck of an existing bridge does not require permitting that is repair and maintenance, but this is a new structure where something was removed and replaced. And I'm looking into some of what. Is required for us, the town, as zoning to permit that type of the structure. But when I read through Josh Harbaugh's letter. He had, and if I recall it correctly, I don't have in front of me at the moment, a concern about that placement of that bridge and. Is there a confluence of two sections of Blue Brook or where that location actually is and that is a concern that. Anytime we're looking at a bridge, stream alteration, Josh and his team have to look into that and approve. The physical placement of any structure as well and I'm not convinced that. Whatever that new bridge is, is in the correct place, but as a structure. Being driven apart to have a permit for a fly pole, so. That needs to be looked at.
That 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 was actually, I have a question about that. Um. Our zoning bylaw now, does it contemplate bridges specifically? Does it mention bridges at all?
Not specifically as bridge, as a definition, but there are. Definitions and. Things that constitute land development, which is moving of dirt, changes to the physical structure of the land, so if you're. Digging the sides of the stream and putting a bridge in, that does qualify as land development. It's not putting in a deck patio and. Relandscaping, that's a major structure that is going in with land development.
Yes, Annie.
Yeah, so I told you I was gonna keep my mouth shut, but I can't. Uh, I'm I'm good friends with Marshall and Stephanie, they're incredibly reasonable people. Um, I love them dearly and their reaction is reasonable, given what they happened upon, didn't know a lot on that, right? You know, in my mind, you know, I don't know if the stump jumpers emphasized enough exactly how important this trail is to them, this gets. People who snowmobile in Dover to Somerset, Somerset has more snow, it's. Snowmobiling capital of Southern Vermont, you know, it is. It is the snowmobile trail in Dover that you don't want to screw up. And I'm sure there's all kinds of stuff going on at the stump jumpers over this, um, as far as consequences go. Um, but if I were the stump jumpers, I'd listen to what Marshall and Stephanie have said. I would, you know, call on, I'm sure they have a deep team, you know, they got a big club, a lot of people. Um, I'm sure they have expertise. I'm sure if uh, you know, maybe. Higher ups in in stump jumpers came up with a proposal, um, and offered it to Marshall and Stephanie. And the tone was correct, um, they would consider it, I don't know about this year or next year or whatever, but if I was on the stump jumpers, I would. Marshall and Stephanie and what they've said tonight, and I would, I would come to them. With a proposal for how to move forward respectfully, um. Those are my two cents.
Thank you. Yes, Richard.
My one concern is that this is an incomplete project. So in the construction of our bridges, we use old Garberell rails. They get screwed down and they become a basin where we lay down blanket, we put dirt and they grow grass. So it actually looks like a bridge of land going over, right now that isn't done. In the time that I was up there visiting with guys and doing and just taking pictures. There were a lot of hypersnow. Um, something needs to be completed. In a very short period of time, so nobody could, that's my concern. Cuz it's not something you can walk over. The water's very low right now, people just probably just go down and back up, it's about a four foot bank down and back up, so. That's my concern is I don't want anybody getting hurt trying to walk across it. It's just a stop.
I would like to speak if I could, I'm on, I'm on Zoom, so I don't know how to raise my hand, but.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Are you, are you done? Okay.
Okay, thank you, guys. Um, you know, I just kinda wanna say, you know, us. Uh, for all, you know, all intents and purposes, I am on the board for the club, um, you know, I'm kind of a young guy. I'm thirty-nine, you know, I I own a business here in Wilmington. Um, you know, when we go out and we do a job, a project like that. We do it to the highest standards, I mean, we build it as if. It was on our land and I completely understand about. You know, walking excavators into somebody's property. Um, without permission, you know, we we can't do that. Um. But you know, what we, what we did there is we improved that crossing and it's gonna look so much more natural. Uh, this is a real common thing we do, this is by the book. The state tells us how to do this, we're not just randomly. Building these bridges, I mean, this is fully engineered. Uh, once we put down the the topsoil. And we grass seed it, I mean, they're beautiful crossings, we have several of these bridges already in the area. Um, so I just, I just wanna say, you know, we're all volunteers, it's not like we're these, this big corporation that's going out. Trying to track excavators down people's property, I have snowmobile trails on my property. And basically, everybody does, it's on the board. So we're, we're really not trying to step on people's toes, you know, but you have to understand that we're just. Business people here in 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 Vermont and. It's hard, it's so hard to get in contact with all these landowners, we do the best that we can. But anything that that's elapsed in that is is, you know, which is not what we do, we're not secretaries, we don't sit in an office, you know, we're all. Just kinda working guys and. You know, we completely understand. Mis stepping. And apologize for that, but. That bridge is gonna be so much nicer than what was there, it's not gonna have the crease zone, it's gonna be a beautiful bridge. And if we do. Shut that bridge down, it's gonna shut down Dover. As far as snowmobile traffic, so. All those businesses in Dover are gonna take a humongous hit this winter, so just, just kinda wanted to say that and uh, thanks for giving me some time.
Well, thank you, Charlie, but still. Uh, it's Marshall and Stephanie's land and. You you know, I'm not sure it's gonna be a big, beautiful bridge or something, but it's just, it it's not the way you do things.
Right, understanding.
Um, Linda?
I just have a question of. What insurance has to do with this, I might have missed the first part of the meeting, I just got home, but um. Are, who's liable? If per se, somebody goes over the bridge. And for whatever reason they get hurt, whether. For whatever reason, are the property owners liable or when they give a right away? Does that go back to the club?
So I wanna ask a couple of things. First, when a bridge is completed and or any of the trail that we have with our landlords, VAS has an insurance policy that covers all the uh. All the bridges and and trails. I'd like to ask. Uh. You guys. To immediately be able to roll off. The bridge as it is right now, now that's not gonna wait, it's gonna have the yellow, you know, the yellow uh, uh, roll with a bubble of do not enter signs, but. I think that's something that that we can all agree should be done.
Absolutely, and you mean at the, at the entrance to that field?
Both sides, I'm talking about the route, we we see people coming in from the round on the side.
Okay, so so. From Far Beyond, cuz cuz people go shooting across Far Beyond. And there's the, a big field that they go across and then they go down into the woods and the bridge is down there. So. I would definitely want. Lots of of hazard, hazard tape, et cetera.
Look. If the bridge is shut for for however, however long. It will be shut on the Woodford side of of things, they have a gate on their side, everything will obviously be shut on our side, it would. There will be nobody using that bosline or that field. Uh, for for. You know, from now on, until something's, you're ranching, so you're protected on your side with your land. And then there will be minimal traffic, cuz we will hold up the traffic somewhere else. But as as Richard, we're we're concerned about. Non-snowmobiling traffic, but I don't wanna try to.
Sarah.
Um. Do you guys have a signed agreement with them to use their land right now, do you have an active signed agreement?
I don't, I don't think we've had anything permitting this.
Because if you don't, how are they covered by your insurance?
We have, we have many landowners, but probably, you know, at least the property of of our hundred and ten properties out here is. Uh, uh, more than a dozen that. We're still searching for landowners.
These folks live right here, they, you don't have to search too far to find out where they live.
I I get it now, I I I know if.
And they've been living there for a long time.
Really long time. I'm just saying, if if, you know, we're talking about the the insurance policy that's in in force, if they don't have a signed agreement with you. Are they protected by that or can somebody come across that land and? And not, and and sue them?
Right.
So we're only talking about snowmobiles. Right, with, because, you know, I'm saying that once the snowmobiles are not allowed there, they're not gonna be there. There's no bridge here, so they're not going there.
Okay.
Uh. As far as everything else, that that's not a. Uh, no for you.
So I do, I I have to disagree that people, I mean, unless you're closing off the entire VAS trail. To um, on on the uh. Up to Somerset?
West.
The, uh, you're gonna close off the entire VAS trail west of Far Beyond Road, is that correct?
Correct, it will be closed off, the Woodford side, I'm not saying that when we snowmobile us coming out of Upper Highlands, Lower Highlands. Trying, they will try a little more.
Right.
Right, but no one's gonna come from the south down this way. Uh, I, once we close trails, they're closed, but. We got the weather.
Yes, I I don't hear your name.
Hi, my name is Linda, I'm part of the stump jumpers, um. I'm fairly new to the group this year and. I don't, I've heard a lot of what people say, I think it's a great idea, I think it could put in writing. What as landowners, they would like to see happen. But I can also say from working with the group as volunteer, going out and taking down things, that different landowners. Uh, Mike has gone out of his way to do things for them, so like if they need a tree removed or if they need something clear. Or things like that, so. You know, if it's the site of having the excavators go through, is there something we can do? What assurances can we bring and do besides putting in writing? That we will follow certain procedures to make this work for everybody?
Sarah.
Um, I think that that was what I was suggesting early, was that they come up with what will make them happy and I and I would also like to say, I I. I think maybe we've talked about it enough for right now. Um, I don't think we're gonna come up with a solution tonight, um, that that was pretty clear right from the beginning. But we've had a good conversation and there are some starting points for people to work from at this point. Do we have a way?
You guys need a little distance.
Yeah, that's really.
Yes.
No, I'm just asking if there's. Take the landlords, but if there's a possibility of letting this. Have the trail where it's been for, I don't know how long, and rerooting. In future. To get off their land.
Are you asking to use it this winter?
That's what I'm asking.
I think they already said no.
I'm just saying, that that was my question, to to do it this winter, complete the bridge and like Mike said. If they run us off the property, buy the bridge for a dollar, it's theirs and. And we can reroot, but we need time to reroot. Otherwise, there's a lot of loss in revenue for Dover. You know, people come here for gas. To have some lunch, whatever, that that was my only question.
But it's really in.
It's their choice.
Their choice, and I don't want people to make them feel guilty about it, if it's what you have to do, it's what you have to do.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Anything for what I'm.
We thank them for what I'm they have given us.
Jenny?
Um, so I'm understanding that, um, nobody got sent letters, set it up. So that that was what explained to me. I'm not a stump jumper. But um, there's a way to solve this issue. And I'm not putting anybody down, but women are much better with paperwork than I. So if if you get somebody who would do it, I I would do it. I volunteer. I don't snowmobile, but you know, I'm great at paperwork. And I would make sure that all the letters, anything that needed to go out, went out in the future. So.
Oh, Mike.
If that happened, I mean, Andy can testify that I have, I'm very OCD.
You do.
And I used to be president of the chamber for two years, the secretary for two years, and, you know, we had fifty members at the end of the year. I had another hundred members. So I'm I do my work. And.
So there you go, Mike.
That makes me feel better. I'll take over and nothing will let it like this happen again to anybody, not just him, anybody.
Yeah.
And I really do have OCD when it comes to safety, really.
Okay.
I I'm busy.
I think we have a whole agenda tonight, and I think.
That's exciting one.
We've. There's a lot of food for thought, and and people need to just. And but Jenny just offered to do so. A good job, so I think you guys ought to come back into compliance with what you should be doing over here and do that.
My just pride is God, not to me.
Okay, but.
I'm not making this.
Thank you.
I do.
We hear, we hear you all completely.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, who's gonna stay for the next thing? A porta potty at Board's Hill.
Thank you all. Take care.
Very good evening.
Thanks, folks.
Nice weekend.
So Shannon's not here tonight. So after she gave us, you know.
She gave us Vincent's email.
Right, which basically. Asking for a porta potty because the weekend of the disc golf turn- uh, tournament. People were trying to use bathrooms at restaurants around. Um, I talked to, I talked to Shannon about this. I said, are you considering this for this fall? And she said, no, with the that it may be for next summer on the tennis courts. Uh, there is a lot of traffic there, but it's not a decision we have to make today. We we can all think about it, and she's thinking about it too, so. So I just, I just, I got it, but. We don't have to make discussion. They went, they're they're gonna pick up the porta potties soon anyway, so. Right, and then I need you to step one back over it. I, that's not part of the stew.
Gotcha.
Uh, moving on to unfinished business. Consider Townwell Common Project update from Jeanette, her favorite thing. Growing old on this project.
Mm-hmm. Uh, yeah, I was looking at it as basically as the Town Hall ramp, but.
Hmm.
Um, so originally, I um, I met last week with Travis, Bart Cushing. Um, whose company installed the the new well. Um, Archie Clark, who does excavation work. Um, so we all met together down there, and they were on board with the project, um, gave me some estimates on. You know, to get that work done, to get the excavation done up to the library, get the piping and get the well hooked up. Um. And so I cast their quotes and their information, their take from the the visit onto our engineers. And the state folks was our vision done. Um, so, um, so it kinda threw a wrench into the works, uh, because of the contaminated soil. That has been caused by the old well, which leaked, and that's where the PFAS ended up in the ground as well as in the water. So there's contaminated soil that needs to be excavated, and there's a whole process on doing that. It's not simply just digging it up. Um. You know, it has to be tested, and then that has to go to a specific place that will handle that sort of thing. Um, Travis was willing to transport anything that was dug up, but it sounds like, um, it has to be a special. Special truck, special everything. So, um, the engineers were working with the state on a soil management plan.
Oh, my goodness.
So that's the next step.
Excuse me. Have they tested the soil? They know what the fabric is?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
I didn't see a bill for that.
Oh, that's it, oh, a while ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, and they have a plan. There's a a plan where specific areas, it's not the whole, it's not covering the whole ground. But there are specific areas where there are contaminated soils. Uh, anyways, so Stephen at CAS was reaching out to. Uh, gentleman at the state to compile that soil management plan. Uh, which of course is gonna be an additional cost to have it sampled, handled, fault, disposed of, et cetera. So.
I wish the state would put this whole, like, like, uh, like a ladder, a spreadsheet. Cause every time you think you're getting to the end, you're not at the end.
I know.
Yeah.
Believe me. Um, yeah, I really thought I was close. Uh, I thought it could be done this winter, I mean, this fall. Doesn't look like it, and I guess there's still potential, but.
Unlikely.
Unlikely, unlikely, whatever.
That's really disappointing news.
It is.
So, thank you. You're very diligent on this, Jeanette, and I know you really wanna get it behind you, as we. But then price tag just continues to escalate, and it's it's kind of crazy.
Anyways, that's the story.
Thank you. Now, we need to go in the Board of Liquor Control. Motion to go in the Board of Liquor Control.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Uh, make a motion, Mike is waving his affirmative. Uh, that we approve special event permits for the Wine and Harvest Festival for the following businesses. Split Steels LLC, Snow Republic LLC, Alexander Abfall, Golden World Brew. Table Farm Fermentory, Snow Farm Winery LLC, Valley Craft Ales LLC, Vermont Distillers. Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve the cater permit for WY Foster LLC, Dinner at Fairview Farm, twenty-five Jackie Hall Road on October eighteenth from five thirty to nine thirty. Second. Any discussion on that? All favor?
Aye.
Motion to come out of the Board of Liquor Control.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And then we have the consent agenda. We need to move the minutes of September second, and Patrick was not here. Um, we're going to approve the minutes of September second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I guess I've stayed.
Yeah, three oh one. And. And then we have the warrants of September thirteenth in the amount of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. I make a motion that we approve the warrants of September thirteenth for one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have FYI, we have Dover water test for September twenty-fourth. Uh, no, canceled.
Yeah, sorry, it's canceled till October twenty-second.
Oh, I see. It's whited out on this one.
I know, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, then we have the town flood adaptation public forums tomorrow night, six o'clock, OSEC. So seven thirty-ish. Uh, Wyndham Regional Commission Public Hearing in Brataville on September thirtieth. This, this was circulated to everybody. You wanna do that? Dover Day, October fifth, at Dover Town Hall, Town Fair, October eighth, South Burlington. And liaison reports.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, executive session? Nope, nope. Adjournment. At seven twenty-nine.